If we livestream.
I'll save that.
It'll save it on YouTube.
Yes.
Yep, we're ready.
Good to go?
Yes.
Elected call Tuesday, January twenty first, two thousand twenty five, regular session of the Board of Commissioners to order. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make comment today? Okay, hearing none. January twenty first, board agenda. Are there any additions?
Not today, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the as presented.
Commissioner Schmidt has made the motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Van Orde. Is there any discussion?
Excuse me.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Andrew, consent agenda.
Today, we have approval of the January seventh board meeting minutes, approval of the Health and Human Services County and Hospital Accounts Payable, approval of two thousand twenty five license renewal for tobacco licenses, approval of the two thousand twenty five goals for the county administrator, and that is the consent agenda.
Okay, would any commissioner like to remove anything for out of the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So I'll move, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Olberg has made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Mary Ellen Tyler. Hospital Matters. Good morning on this gold morning.
So Tyler's gonna start with a brief overview of the financials and then I had a couple of updates as well.
So the, uh, the most recent financials that we have approved by our board is October. So I'll go through those. Revenues for October, uh, outpaced September in all areas except inpatient and walk-in clinic. More stagnant in those areas to be expected. So that's great. Year-to-date, we're, we're, uh, slightly above budget on the revenue side of things, which is great. On the expense side of things, we're also slightly above budget, but it's also to be expected when revenue goes up, generally expenses go up. And so for the year so far, um, uh, operating income of two point eight million translates to six point three percent operating margin. Yeah, balance sheet, nothing really of note. Uh, there's some timing changes. You'll see some big, uh, changes from September to October in accrued salaries and accounts payable. Uh, but those are just timing of, of people going out the door, so. So no, no, uh, large changes there.
Questions on the financials?
Yep. Mr. Chair, uh, I was just, Tyler and Mary Ellen, uh, what is your sweet spot for your margin? You said you're at six point three percent. Is there, is there a sweet spot? I should probably ask first and.
Um, it's, healthcare's, um, been very difficult since COVID.
Sure.
Um, so I don't know that, I think we're still finding our sweet spot.
Okay.
As an industry. Um, six point three percent is a very strong year.
Yeah, no, it's.
Stronger than.
The numbers look good to me, but I.
Yeah.
Lehman Stern is one of the ones I'd like to be, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Um, you know, two, two to four percent probably.
Okay.
Um, and that's kind of what we're seeing in, uh, the broader healthcare industry in Minnesota. Uh, we're outperforming that pretty substantially, so. Um, it's been a very, very strong year for the hospital.
But in your line of work, that can change quickly too, so.
Thank you for understanding.
And that's always wondering, a strong quarter this time or a strong report now, you know, six months from now might look a bit different. That's always wondering where that, where you'd like to land here and then you're out, but.
Sure.
Thank you.
We're, we're just, we're budgeting. We've got our budget set for this year at, uh, two percent is our bottom line goal.
Target.
Our stretch will be three to four percent.
Okay.
Two percent's acceptable, but we really would like to see higher than that forward. And there's so many unknowns right now with, uh, where reimbursement will be in the future, workforce challenges remain. Um, those are probably the two biggest.
Supply chain issues.
Supply chain are still haunting us. Um, a couple of other, just real quick. Uh, we are working on our building project. We had a strategic planning session last week and we reviewed a lot of demographic information, and I'm a big believer in form following function. So what's, what are the services we need to be offering and then our building needs to look like those services going forward? And we're seeing it from a demographic perspective and be interesting to see how this matches up with what we're seeing in general for the county. But we're expecting to see a modest increase in the age group eighteen to forty-four. That's where babies are born. And so we're expecting to see a little bit of an increase there on the inpatient side. That's about the only inpatient. We're seeing a steady, um, use of our inpatient services. Where we're seeing literally double-digit growth is in ambulatory, which means anything outpatient service-oriented. So you'll see that the building project that we have, that we're planning and working on is, is that. Ambulatory care positioning this organization for. Um, so we're in the design phase right now. We're looking and, and the, drafting what the, the master facility plan would look like. And then hopefully we can take that to the board in draft form in February and then start working. And Tyler's working on right now, what can we afford? What does it look like? Um, it has to balance. We've got two clinics that are outdated. Our average age of plant is over twenty years. And a healthy age of plant is about twenty. Uh, that's a technical financial term that he understands, but it does indicate that our facilities are old and aged and we need to invest in them. And that's one of the reasons why you see such a healthy savings account. We have to invest that money for the future. Other, other issue just wanted to highlight is that, uh, we are in what's called yellow, uh, status right now with the level of, uh, in infectious disease that we're seeing in the hospital. We have quite a bit of, uh, influenza A. We are in central Minnesota and that's higher than southern or northern right now, but, um, we're, our, we're making sure our staff stay healthy and that we can deliver the services needed. We have masking in place for patient-facing services. So any, that, that's our status right now. And I just, a gentle reminder that it's not too late for vaccinations and flu shots. Okay? Any questions?
Mary Ellen, maybe you could share a little bit. How's our, our new orthopedic surgeon?
In fact, we're orienting another new orthopedic surgeon, uh, today. He's coming. Uh, it's wonderful having a group like St. Cloud Orthopedics. And there's some changes within the group, but they ensure that they have. So yes, we're, um, really doing well with that program. Thank you.
I need to give you some kudos here. I, I had someone call me and say their mother was in the hospital for, and you had fourteen patients. This was a few weeks ago. Did we have fourteen patients or twelve?
Did we have?
She said the care was absolutely excellent, so I'd like to pass that on whenever, we always hear so much negative, but in spite of being busy.
Yeah.
And I understand Dr. Deb had to come in and help a little too, which she's always willing to do, but lots of good reviews, so pass that on to staff.
Looking at our mission statement right now. The board has reviewed it and it, it, and we haven't formally adopted it yet, but it, I can say it in. We've got our mission statement posted on the wall everywhere, and I've asked people, what's our mission statement? And they. This one just sort of rolls off your tongue. Providing compassionate care to each person. This part, I think you'll also appreciate, supporting community health and wellness. So it's taking care of people on our campus compassionately and treating them as each individual. And then also being involved in our community and supporting our community's health. So, uh, more to come on that next time.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you catching a plane to Arizona now, Mary Ellen, or? I said, are you catching a plane to Arizona now, or?
Not yet.
Okay.
I wish.
Morning Greg.
Morning Greg.
This morning for our agenda, and that's a five-megawatt solar project. This is located in a hundred and twenty acre parcel north of Grove City, about two miles on the county state eighty twenty-five and three hundred street. That's those cross streets, so. This site, if you remember those who've been on the board as well, was, was actually, uh, granted a CUP back in twenty twenty for a one-megawatt project. And that one mega pro- project was gonna be just to the west across the ditch from this site right here. It also had across the road, across twenty-five, on the other side of the road had degrout, had, you know, approved a degrout project as well. And also an application came in for another one megawatt, but that one didn't go through the process yet because it got held up at public buildings and then get through the system. So this is the same area that possibly three megawatts, uh, performed or looked at for. There's a distribution line that runs along county state eighty twenty-five that this will tie into, actually it'll be upgraded, but there's already one in that area, so this will just hook into that system, which will be upgraded. And from what I understand, the reason for five megawatts now is that infrastructure costs are a lot less than five megawatts. From what I understand is that one megawatt will not be as desirable in the future, but more three to five megawatts just due to the cost of infrastructures upgrades. So, but that's why this one is coming in at five megawatts. It's gonna take up about approximately forty-three acres. And the, uh, that's about that. Um, this one vote was passed with a six oh vote at the planning commission meeting. Boris Alzal wasn't in attendance, but didn't have any opposition, didn't have anybody from the public speaking against it or against it. Very non-controversial. Meets all the setbacks, meets all our news, only setbacks, as you see from the circles there. There wasn't any waivers required or anything like that from the public as well, so. That's what I have right now, so.
Questions for?
So as I read this over, I found this interesting. Why does XL Energy get all the solar projects? So I'm assuming the answer is they just pay the most? That's kind of what I read here.
Yeah.
And compared to what other companies are out?
Well, I think XL and the federal government have that. That interconnection agreement is the big piece.
Is that what it is?
If you don't get that interconnection agreement, and I don't know if there's any other players in the game that do that, but that's the, uh, to make a, uh, solar farm go, if you don't, that's the big, uh, tripping point, if you will. If you get the interconnection agreement, it'll proceed. If, if for some reason you can't get that interconnection agreement, it won't happen.
I just thought it was an interesting question because XL does seem to be the one that's always here. You have to watch.
Before you set these things up, if you have no buyer, then there's.
Yeah.
No way to set it up.
Thank you.
The one that caught my eye was Greg Jan's comment that this is some of the best farmland in Sweet Grove Township.
Correct.
We have been fortunate where we have put a lot of our solar so far has been on ground that is not as good or not as desirable. So. Any other questions of Greg?
Do we know how long the, um, the agreement is?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five?
That's fairly standard too, twenty twenty-five.
What was the bond to, for decommissioning?
Dollars per, uh, panel. So this would be fifty times, thirty thousand, so about six hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Do we know what kind of, I mean, when you decide to take good land and put it into solar, it's gotta be about money, right? I mean, they can and not. How much money do we know? It doesn't matter, but I'm just curious. How much money do they get paid?
I mean, I'm not, how much money is the agreement?
Yeah.
Oh.
Is it so much in, so much by size, or how do they?
It's so much an acre. It's a lease agreement. So much an acre. I don't know what these newer ones are. I could, I could, I've been soliciting for a few myself, so I, they range from, I'm gonna say two thousand to three thousand dollars an acre per year.
Per year.
With a two percent.
For twenty-five years.
Yep.
And what would be cash rent approximately?
Well, this is fi- probably forty acres, so eighty thousand dollars. Oh, you mean farmland?
Yeah.
And you got three hundred bucks an acre. So twelve thousand dollars a year on ag land, let's say.
Financial thing. Yep. I get it. Sure.
And, and those area, I know they were working, the one megawatts in that neighborhood there while it was the same time, so six years ago already. They were working on some one megawatts there. None of these processes are quick either.
Right.
I mean, they take a long time. From the time they contact you to the time it actually goes online is, could be six years real easily. So this one might be two and a half years out yet.
Yep.
They're somewhere in the middle.
This is within a mile of that, of the tran- the transfer line. It's gonna come through this area when it comes, it comes through. This is gonna be within a mile of that area, so.
Interesting. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the conditional use permit number one six five four zero for a five-megawatt solar garden located in the northwest one-fourth of the northwest one-fourth and northeast one-fourth of the northwest one-fourth in section twenty-seven, township one twenty, range thirty-two, Sweet Grove Township with the conditions.
We have a motion by Commissioner Olberg. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Van Orde. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Tim. Our veteran service officer with an annual report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This year, maybe two weeks ago. But it's good to be back. Good morning. Tim Steiner, uh, Meeker County Veteran Service Office. Great to be here. First slide, we can go right away to the, the next slide. So this is our mission at the Meeker County Veteran Service Office. It's to advise, counsel, assist veterans and their families in obtaining earned veteran benefits. And state programs, and to act as an advocate on their behalf or direct them to other authorized agencies or providers as needed. Now, what does that actually mean? There are three departments within the VA. There's the Veterans Benefit Administration. There's the Veterans Health Administration, and there's the Veteran Cemetery Administration. We mostly work within the Veterans Benefit Administration, assisting veterans with applying for disability compensation. A good example of that is service-connected hearing loss, probably the most common claim within the VA, uh, system. And our job is to guide them through the process, make sure the correct forms are filled out, and it requires documentation to give them the best chance of success. So in a nutshell, that's what we do. When it comes to the Veterans, uh, Health Administration, our primary, uh, goal is to enroll them in the, uh, healthcare, um, and it's a healthcare system. And, and most of the, the veterans around here use the St. Cloud VA healthcare, or, or St. Cloud VA. And, uh, it's got a really good reputation, and, uh, you'll see that in numbers. As, uh, when we go through the transportation program, that's mostly where we're transporting veterans, so. The National Cemetery, uh, Administration, a good example of, uh, that is, uh, we, uh, work with the surviving spouses to, to complete burial applications, or if the veteran is still alive, uh, pre-application or pre-registration is something we do. Fort Snelling is, uh, a national, the only national cemetery in Minnesota. We also assist the veterans and their families, or the families with, uh, up area app- applications for the state, uh, military, uh, veteran cemeteries. Uh, the biggest one around here is Little Falls. So a good example of, uh, directing veterans to authorized agencies, uh, is when a homeless veteran comes into our office, uh, a number of things happen. Uh, number one, I, I really don't know that they're a veteran most of the time. So, um, we've got a number of different tools to assist them, and one of the things that we, uh, typically go to right away because they're homeless and they need, uh, you know, a place to stay is we work with UCAP, United Community Action Partnership. And we've been doing that for quite a while. That's been very successful. Uh, that gives me some time to get into the next level of support. Maybe walk them down to the, uh, Meeker County Health and Human Services Office, uh, to get some assistance there, whether it's a SNAP program or whatever it might be. Uh, and also to work on maybe kind of a midterm and a long-term game plan for that veteran. And that's where the state part of it would come in. There's a Minnesota, uh, Department of Veterans Affairs State Soldier Assistance Program that we work with a lot. There's other agencies as well too, but, uh, just to give you an idea what that mission means and how, how it, uh, how we accomplish that. So next, oh, previous slide.
Oh, sorry.
There we go. Accreditation and certification. Uh, the way the, the VA set this up, uh, is that, uh, there's veteran service officers and we need to go through accreditation and testing on an annual basis, uh, continual basis, actually. Every Thursday, the Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs has training sessions, which are very helpful. The accreditation program exists to ensure that veterans and their families receive appropriate representation on VA benefits and claims. Now, my main accreditation is with the, uh, Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs. Uh, and then, uh, one, as long as I maintain my accreditation and pass the test every year, also accredited with the American Legion, they're tied together. The VFW, uh, Disabled American Veterans and the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers. Next slide. Some statistics for our office, uh, uh, you can see between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, pretty consistent, uh, between, uh, sixteen, fifteen to sixteen veteran contacts per day. Uh, that could be coordinating, uh, van rides to the St. Cloud VA or Minneapolis VA or VA-directed or VA-referred appointments. You will, I will note there, there, there's a drop in the walk-ins. I would attribute that to encouraging appointments. And I would, I would, uh, see that trend. Next slide. This is a VA, uh, geographic distribution of expenditures called GDX. It's a report published annually by the VA that details estimated spending on various VA programs. Uh, and the numbers you see here are reflective of Meeker County. Uh, you can see there was a slight drop in the veteran population. That's a formula they go through, uh, to, uh, estimate the amount of veteran population. I would estimate their veteran population is about more than that. Total expenditures, uh, you can see up there, that's, uh, medical care, that's, uh, veterans using the St. Cloud or Minneapolis VA healthcare system. Compensation now is for service-connected, uh, uh, disability. So that, a good example of that would be, uh, hearing, hearing loss or other, other service-connected issues. Pension would, it, that's a poverty-level program the VA has, uh, for, uh, payment, uh, to wartime veterans, uh, who meet certain age and disability and income requirements. There's also survivor's pension for the, the spouse that would be included in there. So, but again, that is a poverty-level program. The bottom line, individual veterans, uh, use the St. Cloud VA. That's pretty accurate. Uh, slight decrease there. You'll see in the transportation slide that we transported a number of veterans, uh, to appointments. So next slide, please.
Oh, can we go back one?
Yeah.
You said there were, we probably have four hundred more veterans than what are listed. So that formula's off that much?
It's only the ones that are using the VA healthcare system receiving disability compensation. There's, there's veterans that move here. Say, for example, they move into nursing homes, say they're, or they just move back here. They never come and see us, so that's, that's kind of a swag. But, uh.
I, I would be included in that. I'm a veteran, but I'm not in the VA system, and so.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I would, I would estimate four hundred as the lowest in my name. I thought, I thought our county pot was closer to twenty-five hundred in the county veterans.
It could be. I mean, some of these people come and go to, uh, another good example is, uh, someone comes off active duty, whatever branch of service is, let's say the Navy. They come back here. They're here for a period of time and they leave. They might go somewhere else and come back, and we, we never see them. Uh, so, uh, or for whatever the reason is, they're only here for a shorter period of time, so we don't capture all of those. It's the, uh, ones that are receiving disability compensation or pension or using the VA healthcare system, and it's a, uh, statistical formula they're using to arrive at that, so.
You mentioned you might help someone with homelessness. Have you seen that here in Meeker County?
Yes, a number of times. Actually, uh, um, actually I got that, I'll address that in a future slide.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
Next slide. So I included this because these are overall, uh, St. Cloud VA statistics, and as I mentioned, most of our veterans use this, uh, VA healthcare system. And I should mention that it's a VA healthcare system. It's not insurance. And you can see up there, eight percent of veterans served are female, and this number continues to arrive, uh, arise, excuse me. Uh, sixty-five percent of patients are Vietnam Air. Of course, they're in their seventies, and that would make sense because they have a lot of, uh, they're, they, you know, have potential health problems at that age. Twenty-eight percent Desert Storm, uh, post nine-one-one Desert Storm being in the ninety, nineteen ninety, ninety-one timeframe. The Gulf War era. Uh, four percent are Korean War era. I just had a Korean War veteran in my office last week, ninety-seven years old. Meeker County resident. Uh, less than three percent are World War II vets, and twenty-five thousand of the veterans served are sixty-five or older. So really what that is, is a majority of the, of the individuals using the St. Cloud, uh, VA healthcare system are in their sixties or older, is really what it is, so. Next slide. Transportation program statistics for twenty twenty-four. Um, as I mentioned, uh, the program's set up to, uh, take veterans to the St. Cloud VA. I didn't mention our, our, the way we accomplish that. It's odd-numbered days in the morning. Uh, we go to the St. Cloud VA, even-numbered days, uh, morning appointments again at the Minneapolis VA. We have two vans, as you can see pictured, both donated by the Meeker County Veterans Council. A two thousand twenty-two and a two thousand twenty-three Chrysler Pacifica minivan. Although they can hold, uh, seven passengers, we typically don't take more than four at a time because some of them have, uh, you know, kind of some mobility challenges. So we currently have, uh, eight volunteers. Uh, the volunteers have to go through an annual physical and background checks. We use the St. Cloud VA Volunteer Services for that at no cost to the county. Miles driven this year, um, and I'll compare that to last year, uh, thirty-two thousand three hundred forty-five this year. We're over ten thousand miles, uh, higher than last year. And as far as the number of, uh, veterans transported, we're eighty-one higher than last year. It comes out to an average of about ninety-four, uh, miles, uh, per, uh, per trip. For example, the St. Cloud VA. Many times we pick up multiple veterans. We'll pick them up at their house, only in Meeker County. We'll take them to the appointment, uh, bring them back. That's why we ask for morning appointments. Uh, we ask them that, uh, they, they give us at least a week's notice if possible, so that, uh, our volunteer drivers can, you know, accommodate that, so. And it really is pretty cyclic. I mean, we could be up or down. It's just depending on what's going on, uh, you know, if we're transporting veterans for cancer treatments, that makes a big difference. We had a number of, uh, veterans we were doing that for, and then also, uh, for example, in heat dialysis, so. Next slide. Community outreach, um, there's, uh, six American Legions and, uh, two VFWs in, uh, in Meeker County. And, uh, I get to those as often as I can, and, uh, we talk about a lot of different, uh, uh, programs that are available to them. My primary goal when I get out to those meetings is to get the veterans to come into our office or at least have a meeting to make sure they're taking advantage of all the bet- benefits that are available to them. Uh, Meeker County Fair, that was nice and hot in that pole barn, but, uh, I survived, so it was good. Not as many veterans, uh, in twenty twenty-four as there were in twenty twenty-three, probably attributable to the weather, so. Watercade booth, the same thing. The weather was kinda hot and humid and rainy in twenty twenty-four, and I think in twenty twenty-three I gave out like fifty-plus business cards. But when the weather's not nice, people don't show up, so.
Hundred degrees sounds good today.
Memorial Day presentations, uh, I've done a number of, of those in different places. That's same with Veterans Day presentation, and I, I'm more than happy to do those. Senior Health Expo, they have one in March every year at the church in Grove City. Uh, parades, uh, you can see the picture of the, the van we have in the, in the parade with some flags. Uh, Eden Valley, Litchfield, of course, uh, Watkins, Ed Crouton, worst, or versed. Uh, Cosmos, uh, and then, uh, Dassel, of course. So, and that's, starts in June and goes through September. And really what we're looking to do at, uh, when we have that van in the parade is to promote the transportation programs. So, and by the way, the Meeker County Veterans Council donated the wraps for both those vans, so.
Tim, could I, could I ask about, that, you can't get a wheelchair in those?
No, no, we, our, I, uh, thank you for bringing that up. I should have mentioned that. The, uh, our transportation program, I mean, they may, can be mobility challenged. They might have a walker, but they got to be able to get themselves in and out of the van. We're not set up for that. That would be a much more expensive van and I would assume the insurance would be quite a bit higher for that too. But I, we haven't gone down that road. Now, the Hutchinson DAV fills that gap.
Oh, okay.
Out of, uh, of, uh, chapter thirty-seven.
Gotcha.
They, they transport a number of wheelchair-bound veterans. The, uh, the program that we have is focusing on the veterans that typically have gotten to the point where they can't drive themselves anymore. And we, we, that's why we pick them up at their house and get them back. Sometimes, uh, yeah. They kind of go through this process of maybe they start using a cane and a walker and they have some issues. We're picking them up and then wheelchair and do that type of transportation, so.
Gotcha.
All right, uh, some new updated information. The PACT Act, uh, promised to address comprehensive toxins, has been around since twenty twenty-two, was signed into law in August of twenty twenty-two. Basically, that's there to address, uh, like, for example, exposure to Agent Orange in Vietnam, burn pit toxins in, you know, uh, the Gulf region, Desert Storm, uh, you know, nineteen ninety timeframe to current. Uh, and they just added, uh, quite a few, uh, uh, number of presumptive conditions. And I'll explain that to the, uh, to the PACT Act. And a presumptive condition, uh, means that if you have the current diagnosed condition, whatever it might be, heart disease, for example, for Agent Orange exposure, you don't have to prove whatever it is you have was caused by service. It's on a list of presumptive conditions as long as you meet the time and location for service, for example, Vietnam. So they keep on adding, uh, conditions to that. And basically what it is, is if you look, for example, at like Vietnam or some certain Gulf War, uh, conditions, they're much higher than the civilian population because of the exposures they had. Montevideo Veterans Home, uh, I mentioned, uh, Veterans Home before. There's a number of them throughout the state. They're a little over, uh, just west of us here. That just opened in January of, uh, last year, so a year ago now. And, uh, their capacity is seventy-four veterans and I don't believe they're full yet and/or spouses. If you're at the seventy percent level for, uh, uh, VA disability compensation, uh, the veteran can go there for free, which is a huge benefit because I, I believe, uh, well, it's a huge benefit across the board. Excuse me. Uh, the SEBAC, uh, the Litchfield Area Community-Based Outpatient Clinic, which would be, uh, administered out of the St. Claude VA, VA if it does happen. Uh, I thought I'd put this in here again because, uh, it's not funded yet. They've gone through the business plan, which means that you've probably heard about some of this. They're actually looking for locations. The way the VA does this around Litchfield, they work with a contractor. The contractor actually builds the building and the VA leases it from them. So, uh, if it's funded, uh, that, uh, approval would either be this year or next year. Earliest, uh, uh, opening timeframe will be twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty, which would be really a big thing for the veterans in the county. And it would really help our transportation program a lot too. I thought this is worth putting this in there again. Uh, there's, you know, federal benefits, uh, for veterans. Then there's some state benefits. If you're a hundred percent, uh, permanent in total, uh, VA disability rating, uh, for whatever that is you're service-connected for. One of the, what just happened in July first last year was, uh, free, uh, you don't pay for motor vehicle sales tax. So, and they get free driver's license and free tabs, so that's, that's a, that's a really nice benefit. Even at the ten percent level, or any level of service connection, uh, you can get a free, uh, Minnesota State Park annual sticker. So, I still haven't done that yet. One of these days.
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question if I may. When we, the many Montevideo Veterans Home, you say it's not a hundred percent full yet. Is that because of staffing? Because I, I heard there was a waiting list and I've had people call.
They have some staffing issues, yes.
So that's why they're not a hundred percent yet?
Correct. Correct. Uh, most of the veterans I talked to, run, talked to around here that are, you know, because you can pre-register for that, uh, facility, are more interested in Montevideo than going to the Veterans Home in cities. So, but they are having some staffing issues.
That's because I had a couple of people call and who would be interested and I said, I don't think they have staff and I think that is the issue, right?
Correct.
And is there any talk of building more of those? Because there's a lot of interest in Montevideos.
There, uh, there's a number of them throughout the state. Um, I could, uh, I can't remember where they're all. There's some of the cities. There was one up north of Duluth. There's one in Bemidji.
Okay.
I think.
So there is more?
They, they, yeah, they're all over the state. Um, so, absolutely.
It's just, we need more in this area, probably. That'd be nice.
I, I don't know what their formula is when they look at that, where they place them.
Okay.
Um, I think part of the reasoning that they ended up in Montevideo was that there is, uh, also a SEBAC there, Community-Based Outpatient Clinic. That's also tied to the St. Claude VA. That's who administers it. But, uh, I think that was probably a big part of there. They're not that far from it and that they could transport them there.
Thank you.
So, Tim, on this SEBAC for Litchfield area, that is fully funded by the federal?
Yes. Yes, that's fully funded by the federal government.
And it has a doc? It, it has a doc on duty five days a week?
Yeah, I, I don't know all the details of that, but I would assume that's what it would be. I can get those details for you.
I was just curious because, you know, we have a shortage of doctors. I'm wondering where. It's a great thing. Don't misunderstand me. I'm just wondering where they're going to get a doctor.
I don't, I don't know how their, I mean, uh, their staffing would work there. Uh, I do know that they'll bring specialists in, like the other ones too, that if you need like a cardiologist or something, maybe they're not here all the time. They'll bring them in.
Okay.
Certain days, so. But it would, it would be a really big benefit for, for the veterans in our area.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm.
You can transport at a lot less expense a lot more veterans.
Well, then you take away that windshield time for those veterans, you know? So, no, I think it's a great idea. Don't misunderstand me. I was just curious about.
I could upset about that though because it like, uh, you know, conversing in the van and sitting in the canteen out there.
Yeah. Good for them to get out a little too. That's all right. Socialize.
Next slide. So some, uh, trends, um, that we've been seeing. Increased number of phone appointments. Um, and that's just, I believe we had, uh, we had around ten in twenty twenty-three and we had nineteen in twenty twenty-four. And I think that's just veterans becoming aware of it. Uh, if they're in Arizona for the winter or Florida, or maybe they're sick and they can't come in, it, it's, it's pretty nice, um, to have that option for them. I haven't done it yet, but, uh, i- if they could navigate it, Teams would be the next step of that. So we could actually have a video and share, share information, which would be the next logical step to that. But they have to be tech enough savvy to, to make that happen. But regular phone appointments are pretty easy. I can send, uh, as Cheryl and, uh, Darren saw. I can, I can write from the VetPro software. We can send, uh, for, uh, electronic signatures, digital signatures. So, uh, very, uh, very nice option for the veterans. Another trend is, uh, continued trend is because of all those presumptive conditions in the PACT Act, uh, it continued to see right around a thirty percent of all the claims that we do are PACT Act-related. Uh, as I mentioned, heart disease for, uh, uh, exposure to Agent Orange, there's a number of other ones like diabetes, uh, that are very common, uh, the number of cancers and some other issues. Uh, we won't get into them all, but, uh, that's what we continue to see. I would expect that would probably drop off, uh, going down the road unless they could, when they add more, that may not. We'll just have to wait and see what happens there. Next slide. Now, a few stories. We do a lot of different things in our offices. We assist veterans and their families in a lot of different areas. Some of the things that keep you coming back to the job, and I'm just going to share some really nice success stories. What a veteran that was dealing with some very serious health issues. He was facing an eviction notice, a disconnect notice. Uh, and typically when they come into their office, things are, are, you know, pretty difficult for him. They kind of, you know, giving, giving up hope. They don't know where else to go. So, kind of look at these things as short-term, midterm and long-term. How do you take care of the short-term? In his case, uh, or the veteran's case, uh, we worked through the Minnesota Department, uh, of Veterans Affairs, State Soldiers Assistance Program and we expedited the claim. They were able to, uh, get him up to speed, uh, so he didn't have, uh, you know, wasn't facing the eviction notice and, and didn't have the disconnect notice. In the process, I also worked with him on a, um, a claim to the VA, kind of the midterm game, right? But we also expedited that and they just so happened to be decided on the same day while he was. Pretty, pretty big deal for him. Kind of took the worry away, you know, gives them some hope, so. But it's a pretty big deal to, to veterans when we can assist to that level. Dependency indemnity compensation, that's, uh, monthly financial, uh, benefit paid to surviving spouses, uh, potentially children if they meet the eligibility requirements of a veteran who died from a service-connected issue. Now, if a veteran's receiving disability compensation, as soon as he passes that, disability compensation stops. And, uh, if it's service-connected from what he passed, say, for example, Agent Orange exposure and he, and he passed away from heart disease or heart issues, coronary artery disease, uh, the surviving spouse, as long as, uh, uh, they would be eligible, could apply for dependency indemnity compensation. I think, uh, currently it's one thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars a month, tax-free. Doesn't always take the place of, you know, the disability compensation, but it helps. The other thing that helps dramatically and can make a huge difference in the surviving spouse's life is what's called CHAMP VA. Now, the, the veterans have access to the VA healthcare system, the St. Claude VA being part of that. The spouses and the children do not. Uh, after the veteran passes, if it's a service-connected death and they've been awarded DIC, for example, we can submit, uh, assist them with applying for, uh, civilian health and medical program of the, the VA, CHAMP VA. And that's free healthcare. So, which is another, uh, big thing to help the veterans out. In many cases, it's made enough of a difference where they have not, uh, had to go back to work. So, uh, when all those things happen, you know, for example, like social security, uh, if, if, uh, the veteran's social security was higher, you know, they get the reduction in that, uh, they get the higher of the two, right? But they're still getting a reduction because they're not receiving the social security benefit they had before, so. Enrollment in the VA healthcare system. The VA healthcare system, as I mentioned, is a very, very good program. Uh, and there's different ways to gain access to that. If, uh, if you're service-connected at least ten percent level, disability compensation to the VA healthcare system is free. If not, uh, they dependent on, uh, sometimes they'll look at income. So, excuse me, if you meet the income threshold, even the co-pays are very reasonable, whether it's, uh, co-pays for doctors or specialty care or whatever it is. But ten percent, you don't pay any of the co-pays and it's a free healthcare system. So, makes a huge difference in someone that's struggling, you know, with, uh, maybe hasn't been to the doctor in a long time and all of a sudden they have access to a veteran-specific healthcare, uh, program, so. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
When you assign somebody, is there, I guess here's a question. Is there a waitlist for the VA? If you sign somebody in, do they get in pretty quickly? And if there's waiting and it's an emergency, will they pay for them to go elsewhere?
So, um, I've never seen, uh, anybody wait. Usually, once we submit the enrollment, uh, assuming they're eligible, enrollment application, they'll get a call within the, uh, first week.
Okay.
Or within about a week to set them up on their primary healthcare. And then from there, it could be specialty healthcare, whatever it is, could be audiology if they got, uh, hearing issues. Now, with regard to, uh, once you're in the VA healthcare system, they have what's called Care in the Community. So if you had to go to the, the VA or the Meeker Memorial to the ER, right? They will potentially pay for that as long as you meet some parameters. You have to call it in seventy-two hours. You have to tell them to bill the VA and they, they will typically pay for that only so many times per year. So, um, now, uh, I should kind of explain that a little bit more if. So, Care in the Community also would be, say, we got a elderly veteran who has real, can't get to the St. Claude VA. They could also, it's, it's the, the VA goes through all those, uh, they go through everything to see if the veteran would be eligible for that. But for example, can't get around very well, has mobility challenges and they could let them use Meeker Memorial Clinics, potentially. That's, that's their decision to make.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions, Tim?
No, I think, uh, I'm always been interested in the, the SEBAC. You know, if we get a facility here would be, is pretty exciting. But I also know how the federal government works and it's a long and slow process, so. Yeah, hopefully that. And then staffing that Montevideo, I mean, I've heard nothing but good about Montevideo, the facility and stuff. Get it staffed and pull it up would be awesome.
We've kicked around the idea of these two clinics that we have and there's going to come a point in time here probably where we don't need them both. For sure, we don't need one. And I always thought that might be a good use, you know, center of care owns them, but, so, something to keep in the back of our mind, maybe.
That and the other, the other thing that we talked about earlier was the, you know, trying to figure out what the veteran population of the county actually is. And, and you're seeing it in the Legions and the VF too. I mean, there's not very many young people walking in the door and I know several veterans. And I, and I'm go, I didn't join the Legion until I was forty-five or something, you know, that's why, I mean, I went thirty years or twenty years after I was discharged before I got involved. What's that?
Last year's.
I wish.
You know, in thirty years, I watched the Legion go from twenty-five people at a meeting to ten or twelve. There was a time there when the Vietnam veterans just went off and did their own thing, which is my age, but now we're old or they are, I'm not, but.
Seasons.
Seasons. So, it's different than it used to be. Culture's changed. There's just things that have changed.
Yeah.
It, it's very difficult to get young veterans to come into our office. Uh, most of the veterans we see are having health. What really pushes them to our office is they're having some health issues. And they heard that, uh, you could potentially be service-connected, so, or maybe they want to gain access to the, you know, the St. Claude VA healthcare.
Or my dad for years would say, you know, World War, leave it for someone who needs it. I'm fine. So, the older people had that and I think the younger people, we have to get the word out. They certainly have earned it. It's deserved, so.
Well, and even, we've talked like the Legions and the VFs and stuff too, um, just getting them engaged a little bit. There's a, you know, brotherhood, if you would.
Absolutely.
You know, just to have them sit down with some of these older vets and find out that. Because there's, I, I mean, I know of a, a few Afghan veterans that struggle with, you know, some mental health issues and, and, and you don't want them isolated. You want to have them feel included. So that's always our conversation through the Legion is just how do we engage them? And a lot of times it's one-on-one, out in the community, having that conversation and, yeah, I should stop in sometime. You know what I mean? And get them, trying to get them engaged a little bit.
Those are, those are tough things, the mental health piece of things, or the, that's the whole side of things. They, uh, I haven't done a claim yet, one of those that, uh, is taking one claim. It's usually, it's, it's quite a development. It's a period of time. It's months. It could even be a year. It's probably the fourth, fifth or more meeting, uh, because they don't know me and I have to develop a relationship there enough for them to trust me to, to learn about some things that most people don't want to talk about. But, uh, the VA healthcare system has a very, very good and robust, uh, mental health side of things. They got a twenty-four-hour number you can call. They got all kinds of resources for veterans and, and groups. And, you know, uh, a lot of times if I can't, you know, a lot of times the veterans just don't want to relive things because they got a right of statement, right? If I can at least get them to go to the St. Claude VA and start taking advantage of, of some of those programs, makes it, you know, that's a win in my mind, all by itself.
I know I serve on Woodland Board and they started a group for, you know, support group for veterans and they just couldn't get people to come. I think it's just difficult for a veteran to come and say, I needs. And this was just a support group where veterans could get together and talk, but. But, I get it. Got to get them there first.
I know, uh, just to throw a general story in here, Vietnam-era veteran who'd never had a issue in his life, and three years ago, on the Fourth of July, he went to his brother-in-law's place on the lake, and they're sitting down, it's in a low area, and he said they started shooting fireworks off that night. And he said, and fifty, he said, oh, he said, it, so it was the mortars.
Yep.
He said, he said, I told my wife, he said, I gotta get, I, I gotta get out of here. He said, and I never, he said, it shook him, you know, that, he said, I never had that in all these years. And he says, it was just, we were down in the tree, and he said, I couldn't see him. And he said, in that concussion, he said, I just came back at him. And he said, that's, you know, fifty years, you know, fifty, sixty years, so. Well, it's real.
Uh, there, there is, I, I should have mentioned this before, but one of the things that, uh, I always ask veterans when I'm, uh, interviewing them, about traumatic events. And a lot of times they won't admit it the first time, because they, they don't know me. I don't know them that well. It takes some, you know, you gotta build a little rapport to do that. Sometimes it takes four or five times. Sometimes it, you know, it's two or three, but, uh, um, yeah. Yeah, that's, uh, that can be very difficult for them.
And they don't talk. I mean, even my dad, right? He passed away a while, but World War II, he didn't talk. I just found out, like in the last year, that he helped deliver a baby on ship, and, you know, he just never talked about that. And my brothers are going, who knew? But he never talked about it, so.
My dad was the same, like Korean War and, and, uh, then later, when he was sixty or so, they started having ship reunions. And a couple of times they had them in, at our place. And, you know, you'd find out more from the other people that he never said nothing.
Especially World War II. I think they've been trying to really record stories. It's probably too late for that now, but.
I think the Dassault History Center does that.
Yeah, I think so.
They actually have a video log, and they go in there and also the Dassault, Kato High School.
Okay, that's good to know. I mean, we lose history, so.
If you ever see the Syria, the Band of Brothers is a really good depiction of that.
Good work.
We're good, we're good.
But I appreciate what you do. It's needed, for sure.
I better get back. It says nine-thirty on my side at the office.
They'll be out there with their own time.
Andrew Letson with his administrator's report.
I think I got about thirty-five minutes here. Brief. Um, quick on the, the remodel, we're making great progress at the exterior of the courthouse. If it isn't already, drywall's going to start going up in the county attorney's office very soon. Uh, demolition on Level Three has progressed exceptionally well, and I'm getting ready to start laying stuff out there. Uh, obviously, we had the delay on the, um, on the exterior, on the new entrance. We're back on track there.
Are we?
We are. They're, they are where they should have been after the concrete was poured previously. Everything is buttoned back up, and they're working to install the, the stucco.
I wonder if they're there today buttoned up in the cold. Are they there, Brian? Are they?
They're there.
Wow.
Um, later this week, uh, we have new commissioner school, and then there's also the, the board down in St. Paul, so some of us are going to be down there for that. Um, last year, when we were going through the legislative session, I, I gave updates as I heard them coming from AMC. So I have a couple of things I just wanted to touch on real quick. We got a really nice update, um, email from AMC yesterday, so there's a lot more detail in there. But one of the big things I learned about last week is the governor's budget isn't kind to counties. Um, a couple of highlights in there, uh, you know, they're trying to balance the budget by shifting costs in some ways. So, a lot of those cost shifts occur in the HHS side of things, related disability waivers, the sex offender program, behavioral health, among other things. Um, it's about two-hundred million dollars in cost shifts that's occurring. Uh, the, on some of the revenue side of things that we receive, AAS aid, they're proposing to cut by fifty percent. Uh, and then cannabis aid, which is our share of the sales tax, remove that completely. And have that go all, all to the state. So, I think, as you've seen in the news, the, the legislature itself has, um, its own challenges that they're.
A little broken, to say the least.
And.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Of every year, um, you know, the, the governor's budget probably means almost less than it does, you know, in, in other years. And, and part of that is because of the power sharing that's occurring. But with the concern is that some of these ideas gain traction as ideas rather than maybe not the specific end, right? So, does the idea of, well, let's shift costs to local become the prevailing idea? So those are things we're going to continue to look at and talk with our legislators about and, and just be prepared for. Uh, as I said, that email had a lot more detail, and it's absolutely worth your time to read. Uh, last thing I have is that we are having a work session next week. Uh, Marcus Brunin from the Department of Public Safety is going to be here to discuss the armor radio system and kind of the future with that. That is my report.
That's the only thing on the.
It is the only thing.
For the work session?
For the work session, yeah.
Okay.
He had asked whether he should keep his presentation to sixty or ninety minutes.
Oh, mine.
I said, let's do sixty, and then we'll see if we can fill the ninety with questions. But it's obviously a complicated system, and it, the whole meeting will be dedicated to that conversation.
Yeah, okay. All right, Board of Commissioners Committee update. Let's just start with number one.
So, um, I'll start. I, Prime West, I'll do the finance and maybe.
You just take all prime.
Kind of all the same. We had a little loss in November. We had some large claims, um. One thing that was kind of interesting in the finance, I don't know if they talked about it in their regular meetings, some of these grants that we've given on, uh, money. And they've actually started to take some back in some areas, which was part of the deal. We're going to have a smaller surplus probably next year. Um, I don't know, I didn't, investments are obviously down, that usual stuff. But, I mean, they're sitting great. It's really not an issue. Can you think anything else? Um, what else did I have? Did a karma update, uh, talked about some legislation, all of that. Um, then we had a strategic planning for the hospital. That was an interesting day. Paul and I were both there. Started at eight-thirty in the morning and got done about five. And when I looked at it, I'm like, oh, my gosh, but it really was good and kept moving enough. I thought about us a little bit, so they had some interesting small groups that they did. Talked about our vision, our mission, um, where we should go with the hospital, you know, different options out there, so. And now she'll get all, as she said today, she'll get all that information together and put a plan into the works, so.
Talk, talk about the location.
Pardon me?
Location.
Oh, and we were at Three Bs, and that worked out really well, by the way, I meant to tell you that. And I think someone catered lunch and, um, snacks. It doesn't matter who it is, but they did a good job.
But it's a, it's a good off-site place.
They have another room if you want to, you know, go off in a small group, and then we had the table set so you could go over, so. And I think you could kind of tell Mary Ellen's done one of these, one or two before, so. Um, went over the bylaws. We're working on bylaws for the hospital. That's been probably taking longer for the board, for the governance board. She was there, the gal working on that. That's probably taken a little longer than I thought it would, but they haven't been looked at for a while, so. And I think Brandy, you've talked to Mary Ellen, so. Stay tuned for that.
And those bylaws have to be approved by this board.
Yeah.
It's not the hospital board. Well, we'll approve them however the final.
There's some things that Paul and I feel should be in there that aren't in there, that need to be in there because of ownership, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and we also looked at, do we have, one interesting thing was, one of the board members said they didn't feel like they were as involved as they should be. Should we have a compliance committee? We don't have a lot of committee. Are we, are we, are we meeting often enough? So, there's going to be a lot of information coming out of that day. Um, what else did I have? I had West Central Mental, Mental Health Housing, which is, uh, HRA Housing. That Woodland, I'm on there because of Woodland. Candy Ohio owns it. This is kind of my first or second meeting. They always have a waiting list. They address the homeless population. I think their rent is thirty percent of their income, so. I meant for that, we just meet a couple of times a year. I had a Woodland meeting, um, don't talk much about that, I guess. We had a mission moment about crisis that somebody addressed, and that was interesting. Uh, CCT, our chairman sits here, so I'm going to let him. Paul is now also, he's getting really popular. He's now the chair of CCT too, so. If anybody's looking for a chair for anything, Paul loves it. Everywhere he goes is five, but he can do it, so. Um, I, do you want to address that? Do you want to do CCT when it gets to you?
We can, yeah.
And that was, I kind of had a busy week or two, but that was it, so, thank you. Any questions? Probably not, so, we're good.
Commissioner Vanort.
Um, the only meeting that I would have had was the Pioneer Library Board, and, um, Andrew connected me, uh, with a lawyer, Ortega, and, um, she was, uh, for medical reasons, they delayed the meeting till, uh, Thursday, February twentieth, so I have no report.
Okay.
I don't know how it happened, that you, I had all them meetings and you didn't have any, but we might have to talk about that.
Well, good planning.
There you go.
Me, the only one I really attended, I think, was the EDA.
Oh.
And Steve pretty much ran that, so I was just kind of learning the ropes on that one. So I think I'll just defer to him since he is the chair.
There's one you're not at that you have?
Yeah.
I'm not even on it.
I thought my life was, uh, complicated, but Paul likes that. Um, as Darren said, and I, you, you guys have been getting familiar with the county itself too, with meeting department heads and stuff. So I know you've been busy that way, but, uh, uh, we had that legislative meeting with our representatives in the office the one day. That was on the eighth. And then on the ninth, I had EDA meeting, and really it was a, a short meeting, um, because pretty much all we did was relax, chair, and do some of the, uh, housekeeping work for the year, if you will, so. Um, I'll continue to be chair of EDA. Um, then on the thirteenth, I had my first executive meeting with AMC in St. Paul. And most of these will be, um, uh, virtual, but they wanted to have the first one in person because we had a couple of new board members. Um, and there too, just, there's a lot of things I, I got a, a big schedule and a lot of things I need to shuffle and, and learn how the, to manage. But, um, for the most part, just setting up that, uh, find out what my responsibilities are. And, uh, and it's quite a bit different than the policy committee positions, um, in several different ways. But, uh, so a lot of, we got a lot more to come on that at a later date. But, uh, then on the fifteenth, I had Grow City Care. We did an annual budget meeting there, just planning out the budget, um, and spending for the, for the rest of the year. Um, things continue to look pretty good there. They do just a tremendous amount of outreach. Um, and financially, they seem to be, uh, getting to a spot where they, they've kind of always been that best. And I criticized them on this when I came on the board. They're like the best kept secret in Meeker County. And that's not good when you are looking for funding for things too. So they, they're, they're kind of getting their feet under them now, and, you know, six years later, we seem to be a lot more stable in the financial department, and people giving donations and different things like that. Too, just easier to communicate with the, the general public as to bringing some funding in locally that, uh, is then a lot of your state funding, they have to spend on certain things. It's not, you know, you can't use it for, for a certain thing, so, so that helps there, so we got that done. Um, and then, uh, this afternoon, I have a twenty-nine-eleven committee meeting on, that's back to public safety on the jail. Work that they've been doing on, on, uh, the side of, a couple of different committees on, and, uh, and retention, and how we treat prisoners, and, and that whole thing, and I know Brian couldn't. I, I'm a little concerned in the twenty-nine-eleven meeting that most of this stuff is already done. Um, because we went a year and a half probably without a meeting, and now it's like we got this six-month window. We want to have these meetings. And I, I'm a little concerned that a lot of this stuff is half-baked, if you will, from the state already, and we're just going to be a formality. Um, that's my criticism of it right now, but, um, and maybe we'll talk a little bit afterwards and, and see what your take is on it as well, but, um. And then I have, uh, tomorrow morning, I'll be going to Minnesota Corn Growers Annual Meeting in Mankato. And then straight from there, I'll be heading down to St. Paul for the Commissioner 101. And on Friday, after Commissioner 101 is done, I've got an AMC board meeting. So, this week is full, for sure, so. And that's all I got.
Yeah, January's been full, no question.
And it always is.
It always is.
Um, first meeting was with PAC for Families. Uh, we, basically, uh, it was a CEO meeting, which is the chief elected officials of the five counties in PAC. And, uh, yes, I became chair there also. But we covered the bylaws, uh, governance, and we had an overview of finances. So, once again, another one of the groups that is having to look at the bylaws to maybe update them. They're very, they're the original bylaws. They haven't been changed whatsoever, so. Uh, Prime West, Beth has already covered that, although sitting next to her, they're going around asking volunteers for different committees. She nudges me in the arm, and the next thing you know, I'm on another committee. I gotta find somebody else to sit by. Um, CPT.
Pick better friends.
Yeah. Yesterday, CPT should have cut over to the new servers, so, um, everything went well. I'm presuming, I see Barb nodding her head, yes, so. Really pleased, uh, CPT, when you talk to Gwen and, um, and Mike, their progress on things that had just kind of stayed at a plateau and weren't going up, uh, have really seemed to be moving forward in the right, right direction. And we talked a little bit on that meeting about the strategic plan that we don't, uh, we're kind of at that five-year. I believe, Andrew, you were on that committee for the strategic plan. And I think that's something we're going to take another look at now, because we're progressing nicely on the tax program. Land Calc and Ca- Kama are doing, they're moving right along on that, so things are going well there.
That's how I, I ended up on a committee.
Well, you know.
Being involved.
There's a theme here for Cheryl and Darren. If you don't like something, either keep your mouth shut or plead it. It's kind of your two options.
Yeah, CPT, I'm also chair of that, yeah. Then we move on to my other chairmanship, Southwest Eighteen.
I gave you that one too, didn't I?
Yes, you did. Um, that was an interesting meeting. It was down in Marshall, Lyon County. Um, because everybody's kind of learning a new role since we finally got a good joint powers agreement, and we created an advisory committee. Now, this is the group that used to make decisions about how the money was spent, instead of the commissioners of these eighteen counties. And so, we're going through a learning curve there, because, and I'm just going to give an example. Uh, the lease on the vehicle that we have is coming to an end. There was thirty-some people in the room. We had thirty different opinions about what should go. And I learned very quickly how to make a room, uh, stop talking completely when I said, this is not your role. This is the governing board's role to make this decision. Just tell us what you want, and then let us apply it. The room got very quiet, so.
I'll elect you again next year.
Hey, February, February. It could be done in February.
Shorter.
But that is a problem when you have a, too many people trying to have input on decisions. You tend to get to that point, so.
Narrow down the perspective.
That's right.
And somebody else make a decision.
Um, hospital, Beth has covered that. We're doing our planning for the future and, and looking at the governance piece. Um, board chair training. We had the virtual meeting last week. Uh, Andrew, you were on that. I, I think it was just kind of a, a high-level overview is the way I got out of that. There was, they didn't really dive into any of the nuts and bolts as much as I thought they.
Yeah, the, um, the first part of it was, uh, done by Michael Williams. He's the administrator of Sterns County. Um, and has a PhD and does a lot of this high-level sort of thinking. And it was a lot of kind of general governance sort of discussion, you know? What's the board's role? What's the board chair's role? What's the administrator's role in, in making all of this work? Um, some best practices, things that, that could be done. And then the second part of it was, was really a, a leadership sort of discussion led by a couple of the educators from Extension.
Yep, so, and they had good things and interesting things to say. I mean, you always pull away something. I don't care what. You always come away with one or two things. I had a couple of notes, and Andrew and I were. what. You always come away with one or two things. I had a couple of notes, and Andrew and I were exchanging emails during this after I heard something, and I said, do we do this? And, um, we kind of conversed. So it's nice to have sometimes someone else that's taking the training at the same time, so you can bump things off. So, we'll see what, um, tomorrow brings in the afternoon. I think that's going to be a little more in-depth, uh, type training. I looked at the list of trainers that are going to be presenting tomorrow, so. Then lastly, a CCT meeting. Um, that's a joint powers board again, Renvo County, Candy Ohio County, and Meeker. Olivia is asking for a lease increase, um, from nineteen-hundred dollars a month to forty-three on the building down there. Would have been nice had they presented that prior to our budgeting, instead of after the budget was out. So, we're in the process, process of doing some negotiations. Potentially purchasing that building may be an option that we want to look at, uh, as a board, so.
And to be fair, they've been paying a lot of things down there over the years, and somehow it just, it's not enough, right, so.
Yeah, it's, it's the same rental per month as when they started, so I can understand them wanting an increase, but.
I think they just want to sell it.
Yeah, they do, and they would like us to buy it, but, um, that's something for an appraisal and other information forthcoming. So, with that, that's it from, from me.
Commissioner. Mr. Chair, uh, one thing I was going to add on EDA that I forgot to mention. Uh, Lumber One, with their project, they're on their, like, their third set of four homes that they're building, and that, they're going to pay back, EDA, uh, coming up in February or March here, just in the next couple of months. And then also, just what we talked about, the apartments are underway over by the hospital and stuff there, so. Drove by there the other day, just to take a look.
Coming along.
I wasn't sure what the timeline was, but we don't, EDA doesn't have really a big hand in that, but, uh, it was just something that was talked about.
A lot of big iron going up over there, isn't there?
Big iron.
It'll be a big project, so.
So, it's just nice to see it moving and, and started, so. All right, is there any other business to come before us?
You know, I, I just wanted to say thanks for everybody showing us, you know, what you all are doing. Cheryl and I, I think, over and over, one of the comments that, that we just shared with each other is, man, it's really nice coming into a situation where there aren't big things that we're expected to fix or big problems that, um, we're going to need to address, because, you know, I've just been really, really impressed with the county as a whole and the, the people who are running it. And so, you know, and Glenn, I'm, I'm, I'm only on the first month, you know, I'm still, still kind of in the honeymoon, but, um.
Are they being nice to us for?
We'll find some problems for you.
The heat in this room is a problem today, so.
But anyway, I just wanted to make that comment, because, you know, again, we don't often hear the good. And there's an awful lot of good that can be said for Meeker County, so.
Absolutely agree.
Thank you, Darren.
Thanks.
All right, hearing no further business, I will declare this meeting adjourned.